Reverend William will lead us in invocation, remain standing for our place to the flag.
Let us pray. Oh God who does inspire the hearts of faithful men and women with breath of thy Spirit, so that they may receive insight into truth and power to express it in language and policies. Grant that our mayor and council be empowered with wisdom and understanding along with decisions that will enable our manager and council and all others in the workforce to provide services to the benefit of all our citizens. We pray for our president, vice president, and those who oppose them. Bless our nation and all nations to the extent of world peace. We ask this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to ask our hard-working city clerk to have a little call for us.
Mayor King.
Here.
Mayor Tim Allen.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Thank you. We're all here. Next amendments for approval, work session, a regular meeting of Tuesday, which was 4th of September 12.
Move to adopt. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any corrections, additions, or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say. Amendment's approved. Public comment period. We have set aside, as we always do, anyone who would like to address this body for up to three minutes, we'd be glad to hear from you. Anyone like to speak? Seeing no signs, we will move on to, we got a busy program, presentations, and I'm going to return to our city manager to talk about those.
Mayor and council, we have a number of resolutions this evening. I'd like to ask our fire chief, Gary Whaley, to come forward and read two resolutions for citizens who are involved in some actions that assisted citizens in our community who were in need. So for the first two items, we do have two resolutions, and I'll ask Chief Whaley to read those for us.
Mayor, city council, resolution commending Larry McHern for his heroic efforts. Whereas the city of Goldsboro desires to commend and recognize the citizens who contributed to the well-being of a fellow citizen without desire for recognition, and whereas Larry McHern is an employee of the Goldsboro Housing Authority, and whereas on August 16th, 2013, 2012, excuse me, Mr. McHern was walking by an apartment on Lincoln Drive when he heard a smoke alarm sounding, and whereas Mr. McHern went to investigate and found a small child at the window of the apartment, and whereas Mr. McHern sprang into action and advised the child to get low and crawl to the front door so he could meet her, and whereas Mr. McHern called the fire department, and he met the child and removed her from the apartment, and whereas Mr. McHern's swift action helped to protect this child's well and well-being. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro does hereby commend Mr. McHern for his quick action that rescued a child. This courageous citizen should be looked to as an example of the type of responsible, caring citizen of whom the community can be proud of and urge all citizens to join in recognition of the heroic efforts of Mr. McHern. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro this 15th day of October 2012 and be signed by Alfonso King, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say. Motion is so approved.
Mayor, our chief has another one, but it's an city employee. I'd like him to do the other, but I'd like our city employee to come forward if he's here. I see Mr. Howell back there. Can you come up and just stand beside the chief as we're going through this?
Whereas the city of Goldsboro desires to commend and recognize an employee who contributed to the well-being of their fellow citizens without desire or recognition, and whereas Thomas Howell is an employee of the city of Goldsboro in the Parks and Recreation Department, and whereas on September 2nd, 2012, Thomas was driving along Royal Avenue when he saw a vehicle on fire, and whereas Thomas sprang into action and helped to remove nine-month-old twins from the vehicle, and whereas Thomas demonstrated courage and determination in his efforts to save the lives of these children, and now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro does hereby commend Thomas for his quick action that rescued the children. This courageous employee should be looked to as an example of the type of responsible, caring citizen of whom this community can be proud of and urge all citizens to join in recognition of the heroic efforts of Thomas Howell. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro this 15th day of October 2012, signed by Alfonso King, Mayor, City of Goldsboro.
Thank you. Again, we have a resolution.
Move for adoption.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say. That is, resolution's approved. Let me, I think I have something here for you, too.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also say we offer a round of applause to both of these individuals for their heroic efforts.
I'd like to take these out because in the box it doesn't look good. And you can put it back if you want. This is the least we can do is present you this certificate of appreciation, and I want to personally thank you for your act of pure and the pride, and I'm sure the family will very, very applaud you. Thank you. I have the citizens of this great city, I know they thank you, and they would be upset if I didn't let you know that. So you take care, and we really appreciate what you've done.
All right. That's a good job.
Did you want to get a picture, or did you take? My hero. We have Mr. McHern.
Yeah, I'll take it from here.
Councilman Goodman will take that and present it for us. Thank you.
Mayor, we have two other resolutions, retirement resolutions, and I think I will read those for you if you're okay with that.
Okay.
The first one is resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Willie Lee Bozeman as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than eighteen years, and whereas Willie Lee Bozeman retires on October 30th, 2012, as a compost facility operator in the Public Utilities Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than eighteen years of service, and whereas Willie began his career on May 18th, 1994, as a laborer in Public Works Department, and whereas on September 7th, 1994, Willie was promoted to a utility maintenance worker one in the Public Works Department, and whereas on July 23rd, 2003, Willie was promoted to a compost facility operator in the Public Utility Department where he has served until his retirement, and whereas Willie proved himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who gained admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, and whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, the other city officials and employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Willie Lee Bozeman their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that we express to Willie Lee Bozeman our deep appreciation and gratitude for his dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro. We offer Willie our best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors, and this resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this 15th day of October 2012. Signed, Alfonso King, Mayor.
We have another resolution.
Some of them, ma'am. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say. Motion's carried.
Mayor, the last resolution I have is one expressing appreciation for services rendered by Beverly G. Keel, and whereas Beverly G. Keel retires October 31st, 2012, as an office assistant three in the inspections Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than nine years of service, and whereas Beverly began her career on January 22nd, 2003, as an office assistant three with the inspections Department where she has served until her retirement, and whereas Beverly has proven herself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, and whereas the mayor, city council of the city of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, the other city officials, employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Beverly G. Keel their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by her to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that we express to Beverly Keel our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during her tenure with the city of Goldsboro. We offer Beverly our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors, and this resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this 15th day of October 2012. Signed, Alfonso King, Mayor.
Another resolution for adoption.
Second.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say. Motion's carried. I guess that takes care, and I have a special group of people I'd like to present to them. And these are people who, well, I'll just let you tell, listen to them, and they will explain to us what they're doing for our community. This is Selena Bennett. She's at Communities in Schools, and she's a educator, been doing it for years, she's retired, and she's still doing it. So I turn it over to you, Selena.
First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to the council tonight. This was possible because of a conversation that I had with Mayor King last week. So if you don't want to hear me blame the mayor for extending the invitation, but I think I do have some very positive things to share with you tonight, and first of all, I just want to say that Communities in Schools is an organization that has been in the community for approximately twenty years. We are totally grant-funded, we're just like every other nonprofit in the area. This is a difficult time financially for nonprofits to thrive, and so every chance that we get to talk about our program and to educate the community about our program, we certainly want to do that. I want to tell you just a little bit before I get into the real meat of my presentation, I want to tell you about the mission of Communities in Schools in case you are not totally familiar with it. The mission of Communities in Schools is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. I want you to know that as a city council, you have already helped us to surround our children in the school system with that community of support. You financially have supported us. This is the fourth year of the Graduation Coach Program at Goldsboro High School. You were in the very beginning stages of that program, and you funded us again this year. So with the funding from the city and the county, we were able to keep our graduation coach, which we're now referring to as a success coach, and I'll explain a little bit more about that, but we are able to keep that position at Goldsboro High School. This is truly an example of a partnership, and I'm so glad that Chief Whaley is here tonight because I want to go back into something that happened last year with the Goldsboro Fire Department. Through Chief Whaley and the Assistant Chief Lisa Johnson, mentors were going into Goldsboro on a weekly basis, and through talking with Barbara Wilkins, our coach there, they came up with the idea of letting a shift of firemen come in for one hour during cougar enrichment time, which is a set time every day, and they worked with our students not only as mentors, but to talk to them about emergency services. They explained to them that with a high school diploma and then going on to Wayne Community College, they could further their education, and they could become firefighters for the city of Goldsboro. And so that's how this idea started. By the end of the semester, we had three shifts of firemen, thanks to you, going into Goldsboro High School on a weekly basis. Now as an outgrowth of that, an explorer post for these children who were interested in firefighting, that was formed in the late spring, which gave kids an opportunity to explore further into the firefighting program. As of now, Wayne Community College, we have formed a deeper partnership with them, and they have instructors that are actually firefighters from Goldsboro City who are also instructors for Wayne Community College, going on to the Goldsboro High School campus, offering Level One courses in basic firefighting for these students. So that just shows you how, as a city council, you paved the way for that by allowing these mentors to go into Goldsboro High School through the fire department, and it has just exploded into so many kinds of things, and so we are just so appreciative of that. This is truly an example of what a partnership is supposed to be about, and what we are trying to do tonight is to talk to you about the importance of us getting mentors. I want them in all of our schools, every single school, but I especially want to continue what you started a year or so ago through the Caring Friends Mentoring Program. I think Mr. Allen was instrumental in helping to get that organized. Kim Copeland and I, through the county schools, we are working together organizing some things with some groups to go into schools in the central attendance area. But more specifically tonight, I want to talk to you about the need for mentors at Goldsboro High School. These are difficult times. They're very difficult times for high school kids, and especially right here in Goldsboro. We have a young man that's with me tonight, and I'm going to turn this presentation over to him in just a minute. He started with us last year and has continued to go into the high school as a mentor this year, and has become my lead recruiter, working through Barbara Wilkins and myself. And what I have learned is people do not mind going into an elementary school because those kids, they're little and they're cute, and you can read to them, and you can check with their teacher, and, you know, middle school is a little bit more intimidating, but they're still willing to go. But by the high school level, adults are very intimidated about going in to be a mentor because they feel like they have to be an academic tutor. That is not what we need. We have people in place that can teach algebra and trig and advanced English and all of those academic courses. What we need is people that care about kids, that want to go in and form a relationship, just like the kind of relationship that you have with your children where you would carry on a conversation with them, where you would ask them, what is it that you want to do beyond high school? Tell me about your career goals. Well, let's look at these goals and see what do we need to do to get there. We know we have teachers doing this, we know we have counselors doing this. Tanya Fason has been so supportive of everything that we've been doing at Goldsboro High School, and we don't do anything without the direction of Dr. Taylor and Tanya Fason because this is all one big family working together. But it occurred to me last week when Daniel and I were talking that people really don't know how they can go in and mentor at the high school level. So I'm going to turn it over in just a minute to Daniel so that he can tell you exactly what it is that he needs as we go into the high school with our mentors. I have provided each of you with a little fact sheet. It tells you on the front side a little bit of our mission of Communities in Schools, what our goals are, the goals that we try to help kids improve upon when we go into the schools, and then on the backside of that, I've got some quick facts that were just released from our state office last week, and I wanted to share this with you because I think it says something about the importance of starting small and growing into a bigger partnership. Now with these facts, this includes both Goldsboro and Southern Wayne because we did have success coaches in both of those schools last year. Between those two schools last year, we served 1,763 students. That means we provided services of some kind. Three hundred and seventy of those services were delivered to students at what we call a Level Two service, which means we go in, we identify kids that are at risk and need more help, and then we monitor and track their outcomes. Of those three hundred and seventy that we worked with, ninety-three percent improved academically, ninety-four percent were promoted, and ninety-four percent of the seniors who were served were graduated at the end of the year. And I think that says so much about everybody reaching in. We certainly are not in a position to tell Wayne County Public Schools what to do. We work with them in a cooperative relationship. I'm a retired educator. After thirty years of working with classroom and being a school counselor, I know that educators have a hard job. They often get the negative on every corner, but there are so many positive things that are going on in our school system, and this, in my opinion, is something that we can do as a community to foster those positive relationships. So I'm going to turn it over to Daniel because I could talk to you all night about my passion about working with kids in schools, but I think Daniel Weeks has some very good information to share with you, and he has certainly been a very critical part of this program at Goldsboro High School. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excited to thank you all for your time. Thank you for letting me speak with you. Last year, we started working with Goldsboro High School through Communities and Schools, working with Barbara Wilkins, the representative in Goldsboro High School, and we helped out with senior projects a little bit, but this summer, we rethought things and wanted to get a clear focused mission on what we were trying to accomplish, and that was that we wanted to see the graduation rates increase. If you're not aware, Goldsboro High School's graduation rate is right at sixty-eight point six percent. And we met with Ms. Fason, the principal, and Mr. Weeks, the assistant principal, and the Communities and Schools representative there, and really determined that our mission in bringing in mentors to the school was going to be quite simple, and it was going to be to see students graduate with their cohort group. And what we've done, the whole, the school staff, the administration have been so cooperative. We've been working with the guidance counselors, and they've given us a list of students that are juniors and seniors who are at risk to not graduate, and there are several reasons why they might be at risk to not graduate. Some of it is just simple attendance issues. Some of them, they're extremely bright students, they actually do well academically, but they're just not there to perform. Some of the students is basic motivational issues. Some of it is they are having problems in their classes, and some they just need an adult role model to motivate them, and one of the things that I found in the students that I personally mentor is helping these students just set goals, set simple goals for their life and for their academic progress. So when they, Ms. Dunn and Mr. Willoughby and Ms. Asher, they compiled these lists, and when we got all the students, there was approximately seventy students that were juniors and seniors who had been labeled at risk to not graduate because of the reasons that I gave you, and also for reasons such as just having to pass eight classes as a senior and having extremely tough eight classes. And so we broke them down into groups based on priority. We started with the seniors and those students who were labeled as juniors but should be seniors first, and as we broke those down into groups, we began meeting with students and wanting to make sure that if we brought a mentor in to help you, would you do your part? Is this something that you would approve of? And I wasn't real sure what was going to happen the first time we met, but every single student was completely on board, but something they all were very hesitant about, and they wanted to make sure that if a mentor came that they were going to stick with them. So what we've done is we've gone out into the community to try to recruit and train mentors right now. We have about twenty-three mentors that are, half of them are through the process and have been matched up with students at Goldsboro High School, and the other half of them, they're just rolling through the application process. But what we're doing is we're matching these mentors from the community up with the students. It's called a program, for lack of a better word, but it's more about people. We told Mayor King, I'm not here to ask you for buildings and money.
No, he's not.
I'm just asking you to help us with your connections and your networks with people, and we only need about fifty more to fulfill this mission to get a mentor for every junior and senior that's at risk to not graduate. So we're asking our mentors, it's real simple, you don't have to be, you don't have to have a doctor's degree, you don't have to be able to trigonometry, all you have to do is just care about the students in this community, be committed until graduation day 2013, be committed to doing whatever it takes. That's the attitude that we're trying to foster in these mentors, is that if you come in, you would be willing to do whatever it takes, just like you would with your own child to see these students graduate, and if it means that you've got to go get them because they didn't set their alarm clock, that's what you do. If it means that you've got to go bomb an alarm clock, done that already, we've done that already, too. If it means that you've got to give them something to do after school, then you do it. And I know that a lot of people in the community, they think that they don't have time to mentor. And I know even you, y'all, you're extremely busy, no doubt, but what I've always found, and I'm a young guy, but I've always found that if you want to find somebody to do the job, you find somebody that doesn't have time. They're usually people who don't have time for a reason because their time is valued and they get the job done. So we're not asking people to set aside huge blocks out of their day to sit across the table and do one-on-one. They can include the student in a part of their life. These students, the ones that I mentor, they come to my house, they help me in the yard, they can go buy groceries with you, there's a lot of things that you can just include them in, but what I'm asking you as a council, and I say this respectfully, I just am asking you to even maybe personally consider mentoring one of the students at Goldsboro High School, and beyond that, helping us recruit people to come in and mentor. I know that there are seventy people in this community that care about the students in it, and I know it's overwhelming to people, especially with all the violence and the things that have gone on lately, but I believe in this community. I believe that we can make a difference. I'm still, I guess, too young and naive, but I definitely believe that if the people in this community step up and they step to the table, that we can make a significant impact on these students, and we can even see the graduation rate go up ten or fifteen percent in just one year. And I'm going to leave you with this, one of the young men that is in the mentor program already, we've seen, when we started working with him, his grades were in the thirties because he simply just didn't turn his assignments in. So we went to his teachers, the mentor went to his teacher, got all of his assignments, set goals for him, and he got his progress report this past Friday, and he had all eighties. And he looked at me and he said, "I got all eighties." I said, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, yeah." And he said, "But I can do better." I said, "You're exactly right, you can do better." He said, "I'm going to do better, Mr. Weeks." So I thank you so much for your time, and I would, one step away just from begging you to help. Help us get mentors in, spread the word, and if any of you have any questions about this, I'd love to answer anything that you have right now.
Let me just say that Daniel was referred to me by some very responsible people who are aware of what he's doing, and he shared with you some of it. There's a lot more that he's doing that he shared with me, and it was so compelling because what he's doing is needed desperately throughout our schools. We have some great young people, but for whatever reason, they just are not motivated, and sometimes they're very simple things. And I know because... And I know because my wife is a mentor, has been, and I know there's a young man out there now who has his high school diploma and is doing well because of her. She's known him since he was ten years old, and it can be done. And I'm a firm believer of supporting our young people. They really need the help, and when he explained to me what he's doing and the people he's got, we could just clone this fellow, Daniel, and get about four or five of them, we wouldn't need many more people. But I want to just personally thank you, Daniel, for what you've done and what you've done for me. It revitalized my belief in what can be done if we join together as a community and fight this thing. And I'm sure you're going to get some help. You're going to get help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do want to say that you can pick up a Communities and Schools application at Goldsboro High School, or you can contact me, and I can get you a Communities and Schools application. All of our mentors, they get through background checks, but Communities and Schools is very fast. They'll get it back within two to three days, and then we go through a training, and then we do a hands-on training where we meet our mentors out at the school, and it's a quick process, but it's really accurate, it's very thorough, and I just want to thank you so much. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Question? How much time per week?
We are asking that they give a minimum of two hours of face-to-face time. And when I say, I mean, they're in the same room with the student. What I've found, it took a little bit more upfront with some of the ones that I'm personally mentoring, and now we've kind of gone to just texting more than the face-to-face time just to keep them on track, but a minimum of two hours of face-to-face time.
If you can't remember, Daniel, you've got Ms. Bennett, Selena there, who's really a champion for this and doing a fantastic job. And he has a lot of colleagues who's young people who are out there doing great things, and that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Public hearings.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'll turn it over to Randy Guthrie to take us through our public hearings this evening.
Thank you. Our first public hearing, item G, is a contiguous annexation request. It's a request for the Doug Henry property. The property is located on the north side of Highway Seventy bypass between Pizza Inn Lane and Norwood Avenue. This shows the subject property right here. The front portion of the property is actually currently in the city limits. The rear portion of the property is out. It's about a six-point-two-one acre piece of property. City Council, they're meeting on October first, 2012. Scheduled a public hearing for the proposed annexation of this subject property. A public hearing notice was properly advertised stating the time, place, and purpose of this meeting. Pursuant to state law, at the public hearing, all persons owning property in the area proposed to be annexed, as well as the residents of the municipality, shall be given an opportunity to be heard on this proposed annexation. If the council determines the proposed annexation meets all the requirements of state law, you have the authority to adopt an annexation ordinance. Attached to your agenda packet is a report prepared by the Department of Planning and Community Development in conjunction with other departments concerning this subject annexation. All city services can be provided to the property. Staff recommend that council by motion after conducting the public hearing adopt the attached ordinance annexing the Doug Henry property effective October thirty-first, 2012.
Any questions from the council of Mr. Guthrie?
Hear none. This is a public hearing. As Mr. Guthrie just described, anyone who would like to speak, for or against, we'd be glad to hear from you. Any speakers? I don't see any signs of anyone who'd like to speak. We do have a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the attached ordinance annexation October thirty-first, 2012.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
And a second. Comments? Discussion? Hear none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposing?
Our second and final public hearing on the agenda tonight is item H. It's a non-contiguous annexation request by S. Dillon Wooten, Jr. This is for property located on the southeast corner of Buck Swamp Road and Huntington Drive. This is our primary corporate limits located right here. Here's Salem Church Road. This is Buck Swamp Road. This black rectangle represents the property. This is Buck Swamp Road here and Huntington Drive. There's an existing convenience store located on the property. It is a point-seven-three-three acre piece of property. The city council, they're meeting on September seventeenth, 2012. Scheduled a public hearing for this proposed annexation of this property. A public hearing notice was advertised stating the time, place, and purpose of this meeting. Pursuant to state law, at the public hearing, all persons owning property in the area proposed to be annexed, as well as residents of the municipality, shall have the right to be heard on the proposed annexation. If council determines this annexation meets all applicable statutory requirements, it has the authority to adopt an annexation ordinance. In addition to the requirements of state law in nineteen eighty-eight and amended in November second, 2009, the city council adopted a policy which allows annexation of non-contiguous areas subject to a normal number of requirements that are addressed in your agenda packet. Attached is a report prepared by the Department of Planning and Community Development in conjunction with other departments concerning this annexation. As indicated in the report, the area proposed to be annexed meets the requirements in state law and our annexation policy for non-contiguous areas to be annexed. The property owner will be required to sign a waiver of provision of sewer service and refuse service to this property. Staff would recommend that council by motion after the public hearing take action on this request for non-contiguous annexation of the Wooten property. If approved, the effective date will be October thirty-first, 2012.
Any questions from Mr. Guthrie of the council? Hear none. This is a public hearing. As Mr. Guthrie just described, anyone who'd like to speak, please come forward, and if you give us your name and mail address, please.
My name's Rick Sumner. Excuse me, I'm going to speak on behalf of Dillon Wooten. Our family owns the property that we're speaking about, and I've provided some information and just want to kind of hit some of the highlights of that information about this property. The pantry is actually who runs the store. We lease the property to them, and the pantry, as you may be aware of, operates about eleven convenience stores in Wayne County or in, I guess, in Goldsboro, which employs about eighty-one employees. So not counting their fuel cells, those stores generate about twelve million in sales annually, and so they, you know, obviously provide sales tax to the city, but they also pay a large amount of property tax as well. This particular store employs about seven people. That's why that's relevant to our community. It pays sales tax on inside store sales of about a million annually. It's been selling beer and wine since 2008, so if it's annexed, it will be able to continue selling beer and wine. Why that is important is because beer and wine contributes about twenty-five percent of the store sales. So if it's not annexed, it would lose about twenty-five percent of its store sales. If it loses twenty-five percent of its store sales, which is roughly a million dollars, so twenty-five percent of that would be lost, you would lose the sales tax that that generates. Also, if the store loses those sales, it probably would ultimately close, and then you might lose the seven jobs that it provides. So it's pretty important that we feel to, you know, keep this property annexed and so continue to pay those taxes and employ those people. So those are my comments about the importance of annexing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Rick, when you came, when this came before us, before, there was someone who spoke and said that there was some suspicious activity going on. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, that'd be fine. As I mentioned, they've been selling beer and wine there since 2008. There was some concern about, you know, was any selling beer underage, or was there any kind of issues there? We followed up with Sheriff Wenders, and he has confirmed he has no record of that. We've talked to the police department. They have no unusual activity that's occurred there, no complaints out of the ordinary. So I was not, unfortunately, I was not here that night, but we did look into that, and we found no proof that there's any problems. And like I said, they've already been selling beer and wine, so it's nothing new. It's just a matter of being able to continue doing that. So thank you. Any other questions?
That's it by me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilman?
Trey Taylor. I'm an attorney here in town, Warren Carl Wollston Taylor &amp; Smith. Appreciate the opportunity, and I'll be brief. I am here speaking on behalf of Mr. Dillon Wooten and his family, who own this property. It's my honor and privilege to do that. Mr. Wooten and his family, longtime Goldsboro residents, they have been very involved in the community. Rick and Mr. Wooten and the whole family have participated in many charitable organizations and have supported many charitable events. He and his father beforehand have been longtime businesspeople, provided many jobs to the people of Goldsboro and Wayne County, and contributing members of our community. And they ask that this property be annexed in, and we would appreciate your favorable consideration of that. As you know, Mr. Wooten owns a number of properties in Goldsboro and takes good care of his properties and is proud to be a resident of the city of Goldsboro. On a personal note, I've lived in the Fallen Brook neighborhood for sixteen years. This store was in the city for four years before the de-annexation, and Mr. Heaton, I would just say, I didn't recognize that store from the comments that I read in the paper and saw on TV. Didn't appear to me to accurately reflect that store. I'm a frequent customer of that store. Have never seen any of the activities, the negative activities that were described by that person to the council that night. So I can personally vouch, have gone by that store every day on the way home from work, on the way to the work, and again, being a frequent customer, that it's a well-run store, it's clean, it's well-lit, and the community patronizes that store, and I've not seen any of the criminal activity at that store that was alluded to. So I don't think that was an accurate characterization of that store. And as Rick said, I think that the police chief and the sheriff could vouch for that. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
Mayor, Mr. Councilman? I'm Phil Bedura, and I represent the pantry. And my remarks will be brief. Pantry certainly endorses the remarks made by Rick Sumner and Trey Taylor, and I won't repeat all of those, but what you should know is this store has been operating since 1998, and the last four years up until July was a part of the city. All eleven of its stores were in the city, so we'd like to get this one back in within the city limits. This is actually the headquarters store for this district, and the district manager, and the district is Goldsboro, John Woolums is here, and he would be glad to answer any questions that you might have. Just a couple of things I do want to point out. All new employees of the pantry are trained in certain specific areas, including, and they have ongoing training, and those areas include age-restricted sales training to prevent the sale of alcohol to minors, store security and personnel safety training, prevention of unauthorized gathering and trespassing to prevent illegal events from occurring. And according to the pantry's records, this store has no history of selling alcohol to minors, and it's not had any reports of unauthorized trespassing. They want me to assure you that they take any and all matters such as this very seriously and would take strict action against any reported incidents. Also, I want you to know, just as Dillon Wooten and his family are, the pantry is a good corporate citizen. I was impressed to know that this summer alone, they raised about twenty-five thousand dollars out of the Goldsboro stores for the support of our troops campaign, supporting the USO, the National Guard, wounded warriors, and other military organizations, so that we hope that you will vote in favor of this annexation.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? I don't see any signs, so we will close this public hearing, and we do have a recommendation before us.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt a non-contiguous annexation effective October thirty-first.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I voted against it in the last public hearing, and the reason I voted against it was basically there was no compelling reasons to vote for it, present it. And, you know, tonight, there's been several, and, you know, it's good to see the interest that the owners have showed and the information that they have shared.
I second that. Gene and I have talked and several other council members that we only heard one side of the story, and that was unfortunate, but I thank you all for coming and setting the record straight so that we could make a much more informed decision.
Any more discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, opposing? Motion's carried. The only reason they came back is because of the action to de-annex, of which they had no part in. Had it not been for the de-annexion that was originated at the state level, we wouldn't be here because they were doing what they should do. So I think we got it right. When I heard the comments, I knew some of the things weren't right, and I knew a lot about the action, but you weren't aware of that, but I was, and I think we got it right.
Well, we all knew Trey lived out there, so we just weren't.
Well, you know, I didn't know Trey lived out there until right now. Good.
That's good to know he's out there.
It's good to know it's his fault. Okay. That takes care of our public hearings, and Mr. Manager, we go to our consent agendas.
Mayor and Council, on your consent agenda, you have items I through P. We did remove item L to the action agenda, so you approve the consent agenda, it would be items I through P minus L.
Make a motion, we approve those. Second. We have a motion and a second that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussions or comment? If not, we'll have a roll call. Vote for you.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Mayor President Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Bivens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilmember Acop?
Yes.
Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. Names requiring individual action?
Item L, Mayor. We have item L from the consent agenda. Randy could give you a brief introduction and see if you have any other questions or comments.
Item L is an amendment to Chapter Ninety-One entitled Animals of the Code of Orifices for the City of Goldsboro. This amendment specifically deals with domestic fowl. Has become a trend for families to participate in small-scale urban farming activities, which would include raising a limited number of chickens in order to provide fresh eggs for their personal use. The proposed amendment would add a new subsection entitled Domestic Fowl to our existing city code. Currently, the city's ordinance specifically targeting horses, mules, cattle, swine, and chickens requires separation distance of two-hundred yards from a dwelling, hospital, school, church, or eating establishment. The proposed new regulations would require that a license be issued by the city animal control officer, and an annual license fee would be required and set by the council. Other regulations include the following. The ordinance will limit you to six chickens. Roosters would still be prohibited unless the two-hundred-foot separation distance is maintained or the property is a bona fide farm. Fowl may not run at large and must be located within an enclosure that is well-ventilated and constructed materials conducive to regular cleaning. A minimum of ten square feet of space for each fowl must be provided. Any enclosure or housing must be located in the rear yard and must be a minimum of fifteen feet from all property lines, and violations of these requirements may constitute revocation of the license that will be issued by the animal control officer. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We don't know how many existing ones we have at present.
There, I don't know, there's probably some out there, but there are none that are legally established because unless you meet the two-hundred-yard requirement, six-hundred-foot requirement, chickens currently should not be located in the city limits, whether it be roosters or domestic hen.
Mr. Mayor, move for adoption.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, opposing? No.
I'll say no.
Even that, we won't have a chicken coming?
I don't want. I'm not going to vote to have chickens next to me. You can say what you want.
Well, that's your privilege. You have a right to your vote, man. I'll tell you.
I'm already a one, but I don't think we need chickens in town.
City managers, report.
Mayor, I have a couple items I would like to mention. First, the Taste of Wayne was held in downtown this past weekend. They had moved from Wayne Community College to downtown, and the weather certainly helped, but the event, according to Steve Parry, the executive director of United Wayne, was of absolute success. The paper reported that as well, and our staff had attended, but it was a real effort of a lot of people in the community pulling that together along with city staff, and I was happy to hear it was a very good event for downtown, and they expect to return a similar weekend next year. I'd also like to mention the Paramount. We've kicked off the city series. We can sponsor a few of them, but our magician was a big success October fifth. Sherry reported that there were people, young and old, from town, from out of town, places she had never seen in the theater there during that event, and that her comedian, the former Miss North Carolina, is going to be here November sixteenth, Jeannie Robertson, and at that time, there were less than twenty tickets left, so it'll be a sold-out show as well. So it's off and running for the year, along with the other So it's off and running for the year, along with the other productions that are put on there as well. And then we'll have Scott Barnard to come up and talk about our hay maze, and just give you some brief statistics on it. It's the first one we've run maybe ever, but certainly in a while, and let you tell him what he's doing there in front of Herman Park Center.
All right. Good evening, gentlemen. Just want to let y'all know that our hay maze, which is constructed of just shy of two thousand bales of straw, is about a quarter mile long from start to finish, assuming you make all the right turns, you can make it much longer than that, actually. We've already had, we've been open two weekends in a row, we're only open Fridays and Saturdays from four to eight P.M. We've had five hundred and ninety folks go through the maze so far, and we've.
Really? Anybody getting lost?
A lot of people. And we've actually netted around thirteen hundred and forty-three dollars.
Wow, that's good.
So that's a lot of money at two and three bucks a head.
That's awesome.
Hundred people. Yeah, no idea.
So if you haven't been there yet.
I haven't.
How much longer is it?
It'll run the next two weekends, and then we'll also operate on Halloween night.
I'll have to go through there. I've seen it, I'm intent.
It's good time.
I'm gonna do it.
Thanks, Scott.
Americans can only make eight trams.
That's all I have, man.
That's it? Mr. Attorneys?
No reports.
No report? So we'll move to the mayor and council's information. I have a couple items I'd like to talk about. Proclamation, safety first on Halloween. Whereas it is the desire, it is the desired responsibility of the city council to promote the safety and welfare of citizens of the city of Goldsboro. And whereas the city council is concerned that our young citizens participate in the traditional Halloween trick-or-treat activities in a safe and orderly manner. And whereas the city council feel that the best method for promoting a safe and orderly Halloween is through a proclamation from the mayor setting forth guidelines for these activities. Now therefore, I, Alfonso, King, mayor of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, hereby proclaim, "Safety first on Halloween." And encourage all citizens of Goldsboro to promote and observe the following safety guidelines. Parents are asked to supervise the Halloween trick-or-treat activities of their children, and to ensure that trick-or-treat activities are limited to children under the age of sixteen. Trick-or-treat hours will be observed from six P.M. until eight P.M. on Wednesday, October thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. Trick-or-treat activities should be confined to the youngster's own neighborhood. Residents who wish to participate in trick-or-treat are asked to leave a porch light or other outdoor light on during these hours. Parents are asked to explain to the children that homes with no outdoor light are not participating in trick-or-treat, and these homes should be passed up during these activities. These guidelines are set forth in the hope that all citizens of Goldsboro will enjoy a happy, safe, and orderly Halloween. I love Halloween, I love to see the kids dress up and get out and enjoy themselves, but I do agree that we should limit it to sixteen, you know, if you want to go seventeen. Well, when young adults come out with big bags and decorations on, that's all, you know, that's what Halloween is for. So if we just listen, and it happens, so, and we're not gonna stop it totally, but we can let them know that that's not the way it should be. So I wish all of the kids a very, very enjoyable Halloween, and I used to, as an adult, when my kids were doing that, I just had more fun than they did, because I had a mask, and the kids would come, and I scared them to death. I loved it. I do have one more. This is a proclamation? Recognize, recognize in October twentieth, two thousand and twelve, as Alzheimer's North Carolina Incorporated, Alzheimer's Walk Twenty-Twelve Day. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive brain disorder that gradually destroys a person's memory, ability to learn, reason, make judgment, communicate, and carry out daily activities. And whereas Alzheimer's has a major impact on the loved ones who help care for affected individuals with a place and physical needs, managing daily routines, making important medical and legal decisions. And whereas Alzheimer's affects over four-point-five million Americans, including the late Ronald Reagan, President Ronald Reagan, and over one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand North Carolinians suffer from Alzheimer's disease requiring twenty-four hours here. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is the fourth most common cause of death in the United States for persons sixty years of old, sixty years and older. Federal government research funding for cure ranks eighteenth. And whereas although recent advancements have been made, continued involvement of healthcare professionals and government officials will result in further medical progress and patient care improvements. Now therefore, I, Alfonso, King, the other city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October twentieth, two thousand and twelve, as Alzheimer's, North Carolina Incorporated, Alzheimer's Walk Twenty-Twelve Day. And the city of Goldsboro, and I encourage all our citizens to generously respond and participate in the scheduled events. This is something I participate in every year, and the walk is around nine o'clock. I do this because my mother died of Alzheimer's, and I know the effects that this dreaded disease has. And one day, they will load up, be a cure, I hope, because if you have not been close to a family member or individuals who contacted this dreaded disease, I tell you, you're lucky. It's, well, it changes your life. It changed my life, and I would just ask everyone to support this. Oh, all of these are great events, but Alzheimer's is near and dear to my heart.
Well, you'd be happy to know, Mr. Mayor, that they're making some significant strides in a lot of research, current research that I've run across in this area, so there is hope.
You know, I believe someday there will be, and I might not be here to see it, but I know there's gonna be some, it's gonna, I'm sure, because I'll tell you, it's weird, it's a weird disease. That's all I have. Mr. To me and Poet.
I got two things, Mr. Ray. One is I just, one comment on this past week, we had a state of the military, it was very well-attended by a lot of the community, and our city manager was one of the speakers there. And I guess the main takeaway that I got from it, which we all know and are working on, is the potential, or the negative potential of this wind farm that a company called Invenergy out of Chicago is trying to locate at our low-level flying range, or Seymour Johnson's low-level flying range in Dare County. I think it goes without saying, this would just be catastrophic to the base. If they can't train, there's no reason for Seymour Johnson to be here, and I know what that would do to our community, I think it goes without saying. So I just urge our citizens to learn about it, to be vigilant. It's a state issue, it's not a federal issue, it's something that our state legislator's gonna have to handle, we've already been told that, and we have a lot of good people working on it, but it's a huge, huge impact to, I mean, that's five-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars to our economy, so it's not just Goldsboro, it's eastern North Carolina, and the state, really. So just want everybody to be aware of it, to learn of it when it comes up, when you can talk about it to people from other parts of the state that might not be as educated as we are about it. But it's very important, very important to our community. Secondly, and I'm, I see Chief Whaley out there, but this mentoring of Selena and Dana, I appreciate what they're doing. We've had a lot of conversations, the city manager, Chief Whaley, and I, and several council members over the last year or two, on how important mentoring is, and I can tell you, I mentored, I'm kind of like Selena said, I couldn't do high school because I was too scared to go do high school, so I picked North Drive, and probably where I needed to be. But anyway, my little buddy there, he was, I enjoyed it more than he did, I think. I actually wanted a few things I put on my BlackBerry to be sure I didn't miss every Wednesday morning, so I'd go. And it's just really, to see his eyes when I got there was, I just can't tell you how rewarding it is, and so I would encourage everybody, and we have all these folks that are coming up here saying, "What can I do? What can I do to help our community?" The churches, I mean, he said seventy people for one school, that should be easily, easily accomplishable. So I would hope that these churches and all the other folks, community groups that are talking about this, would get the message and involve, because I can't think of anything any better than it doesn't cost any money. I mean, it's just something we all can go do, give a little bit of our time, and so I would encourage everybody to do that if you can.
That's it. Thank you. I want to thank the chief for the program they started. I was there when, I guess, at their graduation or something, it was an outstanding program, and the young students from Goldsboro High, were they all from Goldsboro High? They were very, very proud of what they'd accomplished. Thanks a lot, chief. Gene?
The only thing I have to say is I had the privilege of being a judge in the Taste of Wayne on Saturday, and I enjoyed myself, I found that there were a lot of, well, there were some places I didn't even know about that had some fantastic beverages and food, I mean, and it was quite an experience. And like I say, we have a lot of places in Goldsboro that we can be proud of.
I thought you'd enjoy that. Charles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to express appreciation to Chief Stewart and his response to some of the residents in District Four concerning some activities that were uninvited, and I want to say I've seen great improvement in that, and we do appreciate your involvement, and it has really been curtailed. We thank you.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Willie?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was fortunate enough that yesterday, Sunday, I was able to attend a ceremony at the Dill Building, and this ceremony was for the naming and dedication of the North Building in honor of Neil A. Stitt. And there's no one that I can think of that was more deserving, as much work as he has done for the alumni, and I know him very personally, as a teacher, as a community leader, and he's been very active his entire, my lifetime, in working on projects for the city. And at one time, he was on the City Board of Education, where the two boards merged. But it was a very good program, and I was very honored to be there.
Neil is an icon for Goldsboro. Everybody knows Neil Stitt. I knew him when I was in high school, and I'll share something with you. When I retired from the Air Force and came back to Goldsboro, I got a Carver Illuminati chapter started, Illuminati Association, and I went to Neil Stitt to get his guidelines for the Dill Illuminati friend, that is one of the most prestigious Illuminati organization in the country. So I'm indebted to Neil for a lot of things, and you're right, it couldn't have happened to a more deserving person.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have two things. First thing, I'd like to echo Councilman Allen, just for, everybody needs to really watch this thing on wind farms in eastern North Carolina. This could really adversely affect Goldsboro and Havelock, and everything else that flies around here. The next thing is, I had the privilege to go to a meeting with Scott Barnard and Councilman Allen, to the residents around the Mini Wheel Park, and we're looking at areas to relocate to W.A. Foster, and really appreciate all those people coming, people giving their opinions, but the thing I found out is the lady who is director at W.A. Foster, just what she's doing there, and I had no idea of the number of people she serves, and the all the programs that she has right there, and really, a facility that doesn't merit what this lady does. And I just think, Scott, that's, please tell her, she does a wonderful job. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Michael?
I'd like to offer my congratulations to two city employees for their work and their service to our city, and the two heroes that were recognized. I certainly hope that you'll make note of that and acknowledge them on the morning program for us as well. I think that those two individuals were outstanding. Jazz on George, if I'm not mistaken, is coming up toward the end of this month as well. And one last note, our city manager, not only is he a great golfer, but he's quite the athlete when it comes to playing racquetball. So he, the two of us participated in the Goldsboro Family Y Racquetball Tournament for the Red Cross.
You represented us well.
Uh, he did. No, we both did, we both did. We had a great time, great turnout, a lot of people coming from all areas, and so we had tremendous participation, just a grand old time, and I think we generated a lot of money for the Red Cross.
Man, we got two of the stars right here, boy, that's good.
I think Michael, or Councilman Head, and I could take on any two here, anytime you want to match it up.
Well, that's not saying very much, Scott. You're always hitting two here. One of you could pick on all of them.
I feel pretty confident the weekend ends.
That didn't say very much, but I understand what you're saying, Scott. I believe you, too.
Michael, I'm gonna call Darren tomorrow and say that you just call up your.
Yes, ma'am. Call Darren.
Yeah.
I have an addendum to what I was gonna say concerning Mr. Stitt. In addition to him being an educator, he was also a professional music director, and he touched the lives of students, and he went outside to educate his own reno, and he also touched the lives of mental patients and what have you in the years past, and I just wanted to add that, and also, he's one of my constituents.
He's an icon, no question about it.
Mr. Mayor, also, if I might say so, about Mr. Stitt, you know, having talked with him for a few years at Goldsboro High School, I don't know of anybody that was ever more respected than he was by the students and by his peers.
Neil's a very special individual. He's a good man. About the wind farms, you're all absolutely right, and I've been talking to an awful lot of people in high places, and I would be really disappointed if that happens. I do not think it's going to happen. I have people who have power and authority, and they said it ain't gonna happen, so we'll see. So if it happens, it's really, really bad news for all of the flying that go, and it's not just North Carolina, but.
We're concerned primarily about Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, and it is detrimental to its success. So if there's nothing else to come before, we stand.